Forts Avenue, Terrence Allen, is Terrence there? Terrence, if you'll come forward. Terrence is going to give our invocation and also lead us in the pledge of the flag. So would everyone please rise?
Let's pray. Father, thank you so much for today. Thank you for the opportunity to live in such a beautiful city as we do here in Smyrna. Father, thank you for the blessings of living in a peaceful and a tranquil place. Father, thank you that you will continue to bless it to be a place of peace and safety and comfort. Father, tonight, be with the city council as they make decisions that impact the citizens of this city. Father, give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding above their human capacity. And lead, guide, and direct them by the power of your Spirit. And in all this, that you would get the glory, honor, and praise you deserve. We love you, and we give you all the glory, honor, and praise in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for those folks that do not know where the Cumberland Community Church is, it's south Spring Road, go to the Burger King at the light and hang a right. Alan Scott is the head pastor. I guess he's a great guy, and it's a great church. If you wear a sport coat, you have overdressed for that church service. But they do bring a different type of traditional church to our community, and we're very glad to have you all, and thank you all so much tonight for coming and doing the invocation and pledge. We've got a couple of agenda changes. We are going to table item 6B, which is Award RFP for Food Truck Event Coordinator. That will be tabled until the 15th of April. I think that is the only change in the agenda. Under the mayor's report, we have nothing other than to wish everybody, I hope everyone had a great Easter. And with that, we'll go into the regular portion of our agenda, which is the land issues, zonings, and annexation. Item 4A is a public hearing zoning request, Z12-009, modification of currently approved site plans and building elevations, 6.42 acre tract, land lot 620 and 677, 4560 South Cobb Drive, Columbia Properties, Inc. It was tabled from February 18, 2013 by mayor and council, and tabled again from March 18, 2013 by Columbia Properties. I know the applicant's here. Mr. Taylor, the background, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, this particular item first appeared at our meeting on February 18, at which point, that evening, it was actually staff's recommendation to deny the request based on various concerns. Then after the public hearing, council voted to table this for a couple of meetings. Well, after several meetings, the applicant has provided changes to the architecture of the buildings to bring more consistency throughout the development, and also to create a better sense of place through design materials. Community Development has provided recommended zoning stipulations to ensure that the development of this site will be in substantial compliance with the proposed plan, and so we are going to recommend approval tonight with various stipulations.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this issue? Those that would like to make comment, please come forward at this time, and have you sworn in by the city attorney, Mr. Garvis Sams. I know he's representing Columbia Property. Anyone that's going to make any testimony, they can come up at this time, too, and be sworn in by our attorney. I guess, I can't see, okay.
I do.
If you'll have a seat, sir. This is in Mr. Wade Lenika's district. Mr. Lenika?
Yes, sir. I believe our Community Development Department has a presentation on the issues, and we'll ask Mr. Ken Sudworth, the director, to come forward and explain the situation.
Thank you. You have an updated report in front of you, given the time compression issue and with the holiday being a short week. There's an adjustment, it's actually nine variances, not eight, that we've talked about. The ninth one was indeed the, on the monument sign of the Krispy Kreme, it actually has a lighter background. So that's been adjusted. And the other aspect is, I decided that it was getting to be a little bit too complex on the difference between the conditional uses and the prohibited uses that I was adding on that, what's in the report, and it will be discussed in the presentation. But that, there's two issues that I had recommended be prohibited, but they're actually already controlled by conditional use. Instead of trying to, you know, change one section and then add it to another section, I just decided it was easier just to totally control those two uses by conditional use across the board. Those are the only changes from what we've previously discussed, and I will talk about them in a little more detail in the presentation. Because this has been tabled, I'm not going back through the standard presentation we've done in the past, through all the history and what's really happening prior to this. I'm actually taking it from the table forward, and that here are the changes that we are talking about and what staff is recommending. You know, quickly, just to reorient everybody on the zoning map and future development maps, all of that is the same. It is at the southwest corner of East West Connector and South Cobb. The applicant is proposing the following. One is that there's approval modifications to the currently approved site plan, including the non-listed variances, which I've just referenced. They also want approval of new building elevations for those commercial buildings, as well as approval of a freestanding monument sign for Krispy Kreme. Those are the major highlights of what we're discussing. This is the new proposed site plan. There are proposed crosswalks here. That has become a condition as to how those crosswalks are to be treated. Variances with regard to the Krispy Kreme site have to do with the monument sign, the sign background, as well as not having a sloped or pitched roof. Now, I'm going to go through all of these. Some of these are sort of bundled together, so don't try to count each one and say, hey, you've got more than nine there, because some of them are the same, and they're just covered as a blanket issue. And then on the undeveloped tracks that will remain, which are classified in this as shops A and shops B, also known as track 1D and 1E, there would be variances on the parking aisles, the parking medium, and again, on sloped or pitched roof issues, because that was one of the original conditions. We have the same issue occurring on shops B, which is track 1E. Then on the proposed Autozone, there's a parking variance just of a slight few numbers less, and their store entrance actually is on the side of the building, not the front, but it's actually right at the corner, and then the sloped or pitched roof requirement. These are the new proposed building elevations. They are different to some degree than what you originally had seen. The awning aspects are different, and they have some similar features to what was previously approved, as well as features that exist on the racetrack that's currently out there. This is the Krispy Kreme. They have made some adjustments to that. They've also adjusted their sign aspects. Again, one of the conditions is that their signs on the building, their wall signs, has to meet the requirements of the ordinance. We are not recommending any waivers or variances to wall-mounted signs. This is the proposed Autozone. Again, they actually are showing multiple signs here, but the elevation would be the same with the exception of the number of signs that are shown here. They've also provided us with a streetscape view. The dimension, it makes this appear a little bit closer to the road than it really is, but this sort of gives you an idea of how this would look as you go down east-west, as you travel from west to east. You'd have the Del Taco, then the Autozone, then you would have an undetermined building that right now would be a multi-tenant building, and then at the far corner would be another freestanding structure. And then this is looking on South Cobb, where you have that same freestanding structure at the corner, and then you would have the Krispy Kreme on that. Now, staff, on the changes, we are recommending, because of the changes, we are recommending approval of this request now, and there are some adjustments to some of the previous conditions, as well as we've added some new conditions. That item 15, the items that are underlined show what has been added. Obviously, we're dealing with the monument sign on 15, and so it has to do with the new tracks that are being developed, which is tracks 1D, 1E, and 1C, as well as the Autozone and the Del Taco site. Krispy Kreme is listed at the bottom with their monument sign, no more than 32 square feet and eight feet in height, which is what the ordinance, sign ordinance requires. Again, wall signage has to include all the, for development, including retail buildings, has to conform to the city sign code. Obviously, the site plan that was referenced previously has been updated, so the date had to change in item 19. Item 20, again, was dealing with architectural style. We had to amend that to pick up these specific buildings. We actually are deleting item 21. That was part of the variance issue that I've mentioned regarding the pitched and sloped roof issues. Previously, on item number 23, one of the reasons for the table had to do with the traffic light there at Gayler, and Troy Engineering has worked with the developer, as well as with staff, and with Cobb County to come up with some options. Those final options have not been finally decided on, and as such, we would add this condition as 23, that the developer shall be responsible for any traffic-like improvements deemed necessary by Cobb County DOT and the city engineer to improve the operation of the existing traffic signal there at the east-west and Gayler. We've added 24, again, for consistency throughout the site, that everybody has to use the same brick. These are, we've not picked these brick colors. They are compatible with our palette, but this is what two of the three uses had submitted to us, so we're just saying they all need to use the same type of brick here. Obviously, what we've done in the past is there's some slight modifications that, in the plan review process, that I have the ability to make some small changes there. I had mentioned the crosswalks previously, and this is the condition that's related to that number 25, where the applicant shall provide stamped and stained concrete crosswalks. Throughout the development, the texture and color, the crosswalk should be subject to review and approval of the city engineer. We're not necessarily suggesting any additional crosswalks, other than what has been shown. 26 gets into the use issue that I had talked about. I left these in there just so that I could better explain. We originally had car washes and minor auto repair as totally prohibited uses on tracks 1B through 1E. Ultimately, I think it's probably best that we just remove those from the prohibited list and leave them as conditional uses across the board. Having said that, that actually, on tracks 1B through 1E, adds four uses that would be totally prohibited, in addition to what was already listed in the previous approval. So that would be tire stores, oil change shops, convenience stores, and freestanding drive-through restaurants. I do want to clarify that issue on the restaurant. It's not an issue on the drive-through, it's an issue on the freestanding. So if somebody wanted to have a fast-food establishment or an establishment that required a drive-through, that would be fine on an end cap. We're saying that that's okay. It's just when it's in a freestanding structure that we are looking at tonight. We do not think it's a good idea to continue that trend beyond what we are approving tonight. And finally, the last item is number 27, is obviously the developer shall be responsible for meeting all the appropriate site development standards of the South Cobb Design Corridor, except those that I've mentioned on that. So in total, there are indeed 27 conditions with that, and one of those has to do with the variances. Again, that's the sort of streetscape view, and I will leave you with that. I'm happy to answer any questions. As the mayor's already mentioned, the applicants are here and have representation. I'm sure they'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Wade?
Mr. Sudworth, first I want to begin, however this goes tonight, by thanking you and your staff for a lot of work. I know you started back in December, looking at some proposals that came forward. I know you've had a number of meetings, done a lot of work, in particular you and Rusty Martin, but other members of your staff. I just want to acknowledge that and thank you for your work. I don't think there's any doubt that the product you've put forward tonight is better than the product that we started with back in December, and that's a testimony to your work and your diligence in pursuing this. This has been as complicated a case as maybe you and I have handled together, and it's just not very simple. There's a lot of factors that have been discussed by all the parties involved, important to everybody, and I think everyone has moved a lot from where we all started. Again, I think the end product presented tonight is better for all of that. So thanks to you, and also thanks to the applicants for working with us and being diligent in pursuing this. Your recommendation at this time is to approve based on the stipulations and conditions. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Any further comments from you or Mr. Martin at this time before we ask the applicant to come forward?
No, I think we've covered everything. You know, I realize you've gotten a couple versions of this report in the last week, but as we talked about in our work session a week ago, that's just a function of how fluid this situation has been. And I appreciate the understanding of council, letting this process work itself out to this point. The one that's on your desk is indeed the one that picks up everything we've talked about. Thank you.
Are any questions? Thank you, Ken. Is Afcon here? I know that Garvis Sams is, if you'll please step forward.
Members of the council, for the record, my name is Garvis Sams with the law firm of Sams, Larkin, and Huff, and I represent Columbia Properties concerning this application for an amendment. A little different than the zoning application process, and this is the second time we've appeared in connection with this property to amend it. I have with me the seating, Mr. Dan O'Neil, and Mr. Andy Camel of Columbia Properties, who are here. Mr. David Shanahan with the Trilogy Group, who's our project manager. You may recall, he was one of the driving forces behind the original amendment to add the racetrack and the Smyrna I group. Also have Mr. Mike Neal, Mr. Bobby Spears, representing Krispy Kreme, so if there's specific issues relative to their elevations or their signage, then they can respond to those. And Mr. Mark LaCroll, representing Autozone. So at the appropriate time, all these gentlemen have a wealth of knowledge. I'm sure they'd be sorely disappointed if they weren't called upon to express just how smart they really are. But in any event, first, let me begin by echoing Councilman Lenika's statement to staff. This has been, we filed this in November of 2012, and it has been fluid, and it has been a give-and-take, and it has been an exceptional dialogue that seemed to pick up momentum as we got past the first of the year. This has been tabled on several occasions, and you've been kind enough to do that. At one point, you did it yourself. We've asked for a table on a couple of occasions in order to allow us to provide you with information you need to make a decision, the information staff needed to make a decision as well. I think what we've ultimately provided has been comprehensive. It's been definitive. It's been evolving, as of, as Mr. Sudworth said, even up to the last minute, changes he's made to his analysis. We last appeared before you as a group, not all of you were able to attend, but it was a special call work session, and I really appreciate the accommodation that you allowed for us to do that. That's extremely above and beyond what you typically do, because it's not a committee of the whole, and it's not when you usually have your work sessions before the meetings. But at that particular work session, we were able to confirm the direction that we were receiving from the members that were present of the council, and from Mayor Bacon, also from the staff. Now, like Mr. Sudworth, I don't want to, I don't want to reiterate a lot of things that I've already said, but I would like to just kind of recap it, just to kind of frame this and put in the proper capitalization. And by way of recap, you remember Home Depot constructed a garden supply center here in 2003. The store ultimately went dark for whatever reasons, I'm not certain. The property was purchased by Columbia Properties in 2008. Before going through a rezoning to allow the things that they had requested for the retail perspective, Columbia has spent well over $1 million in demolishing, of course, the Home Depot supply store, garden center, excuse me, and bringing the site up to grade by grading and balancing the site. That may have been one of the causes for the Home Depot garden center failing, is it was below road grade. It was difficult to get to. The site was problematic from a topographical perspective. You may recall that during the rezoning, which spanned part of 2008 and part 2009, our meetings with Councilman Lenika and with staff, and with area residents at the time, we negotiated with the city and with area residents, and we ultimately agreed to eliminate 32 otherwise allowable uses. They're now prohibited uses, and I'm certainly not going to go through all of those, but it was a long, laborious, but comprehensive process, and we got to the point where you felt comfortable, I think. Well, I know you felt comfortable with it because you approved the zoning back in 2009. Not one of those prohibited uses, though, disallowed the development and build-out with the uses that are before you tonight, and I think we satisfied you, and staff satisfied you in that respect the last time we were here. After that original zoning that spanned 2008, 2009, and next year, we brought it forth with an amendment, working with Mr. O'Neil and Mr. Shanahan of the Trilogy Group to bring forward racetrack in the Smyrna I group, which constituted some deviations to a certain degree with respect to architectural elements. As you look at the racetrack in the Smyrna I group, you can see it, they don't exactly comport with the original elevations and renderings, but nevertheless, it was approved. And one of the key things is that there were no additional conditions or stipulations, no additional prohibited uses, so you still had the plan in place that you had formulated and authored for future development of the property, sort of a guide, if you will, for future development of the property, which gave staff its direction from a policy perspective as to what you thought should ultimately happen. Now, in terms of mass on this site, very little has changed. We've gone from nine buildings to 10 buildings. We've gone down from 78,000 square feet to 62,000 square feet. We've reduced the inline retail from the original 22,000 square feet to 15,000, but we still have 15,000 square feet of inline retail left, and there's another, it hadn't been mentioned, but the 8,000 square feet of offices. So that's what you have for the build-out ultimately, and then, of course, you've got the pin corner that's been created originally for a CBS site and possibly for a bank or some other institution. That particular use is not before you tonight. But now, the good thing is, rather than a speculative development that's dependent upon the vagaries of this very weird economy that we're in and hopefully getting out of, you have before you three nationally-recognized and very successful tenants who are literally investing millions of dollars in providing scores and scores of jobs to the Smyrna economy. Moreover, in the almost two months since we were last in this chamber, we've made significant modifications as outlined by Mr. Sudworth in his memo of last week, in his revised memo of today, and in his oral presentation just now, and your staff has recommended approval. And trust me, I'm not in a position to ask Mr. Sudworth if he'll change his recommendations or his analysis. He's the planner. You all rely heavily upon him. He and his staff did that of their own volition. But suffice it to say, it's important to have staff's recommendation, because from a land use planning perspective, he is, after all, the professional upon whom you rely. And what you've gotten in response is a revised site plan, which, as Mr. Sudworth shows you, reflects the pedestrian connectivity, of demarcation of that pedestrian connectivity, ensures a walkability or pedestrian-friendly, functionally-important and aesthetically-pleasing type of interior treatment. Staff has added another stipulation, which I think goes one step further, and that is including stamped and stained concrete crosswalks. We're certainly amenable to that. It's unfortunate that I left it out in my original letter, and the site plan didn't reflect that, but we think that adds the icing to the cake, so to speak, with respect to the site plan. The architectural style and composition, it's been incremental, and you may not have been able to discern by what was presented to you tonight, but there've been great strides in all of the buildings and the respective prototypes. And it's difficult, not that nationally-known users are resistant, but they are recalcitrant in some respects to change their industrial prototype because of the recognition factor that they all have. But at the end of the day, all three of these users have done just that, and I commend them on that. And we submitted revised elevations and renderings on March 23 of this year, subject to any minor modifications that Mr. Sudworth may have during the plan review process. In the analysis and the recommendation, the way it's worded, it appears that Columbia is responsible for traffic light improvements that are deemed necessary by Cobb DOT or your city engineer, and that's fine if that's relative to the motion that was made by Councilman Fennel when you tabled it here in chambers last time. As you recall, there were questions regarding the timing and the sequencing and the synchronization of that signalization. Mr. Croy, Mr. Hicks, and their staff, in conjunction with Cobb County, determined that the spacing and queuing and the timing and synchronization was adequate with respect to the public side, the racetrack side, 20 seconds approximately on each side, allowing eight vehicles approximately on each side. However, it appeared that in some instances, that the queuing and stacking wasn't being activated because either a deficient or not enough sensory activation devices on the racetrack side. Mr. Croy told us, I believe at the work session, or the special call work session, that the approximate cost of that is around $1,000, $1,500. We would simply ask that we be responsible on the racetrack side, Columbia, that is, and cap it at $2,500 for the activation of that sensory device. The reason I say that is in perpetuity for Columbia to be responsible for the signalization itself, I think, would be probably not the best idea, and something that, of course, Columbia wouldn't, you know, 20 years from now want to be responsible for. In fact, you may not be aware of this, when Publix, which is now in the city, when it first came in to, was rezoned, I believe it was in McCown, and I'm sure Mr. Lenika can correct me on that if I'm wrong, but at that time, they made a voluntary agreement to contribute $75,000 to the signalized intersection, and of course, Columbia made a commensurate agreement to contribute as well. I'm just saying that Mr. Fennel has pointed out some potential deficiencies in the signalization. We're willing to take care of those. We just don't want to have to pay for $185,000 for a new light. We just don't want to have to pay for $185,000 for a new light 20 years from now. We've also been, been asked to add to this list of 32 otherwise permitted but self-prohibited Most of them are already conditional uses, and I see staff has, has recognized that. We asked if they all be conditional-type uses as opposed to prohibitive uses. We think that's more appropriate. And one of the prohibited uses, and I understand where Mr. Sudrith was going with this, but it had to do with the drive-through freestanding restaurants. Mr. Sudrith has stated that staff has no opposition to end caps of inline retail being a drive-through restaurant, but with the freestanding component of it. I think, and he and I discussed this this afternoon, and my client and I have discussed it as well, but I think what happens is an unintended consequence there. I've heard the discussion all the way from the meetings at Jim and Nick's, to individual discussions with you, to your work sessions, to meeting with staff, that you want to see high-end restaurants on the site. Well, restaurants like Chili's, restaurants like Outback, there's some Taco Max, that even though they're not considered drive-through restaurants, they're freestanding, and they've got a drive-through component as a part of their industrial, or not industrial, but restaurant prototype. So I think that you may want to give some pause or consideration for that before you add that as a prohibited use, simply for that unintended consequence that could, could result as part of taking that, that action.
Yeah, I think even a Carrabba's is a drive-through. Carrabba's, yeah. We was mostly thinking about Dunkin' Donut. We didn't want a Dunkin' Donut.
I understand.
Anywhere near the Krispy Kreme.
I understand.
Take a deep breath, boys.
Think I've got any Dunkin' Donuts on down South Carolina?
I don't patronize that one.
Oh, okay.
I'm waiting for the Krispy Kreme.
Go ahead. Remember, part of Mr. Sudrith's job, and he'll concur with this, is the original analysis that he brought forward. And I'm just going to go through very briefly. It's called Steinberg criteria, and he has concluded, "The zoning proposal will permit uses that are suitable. The zoning proposal will not adversely affect adjacent nearby properties. It will not cause excessive use of the city or the county's infrastructure. It's in conformity with the city's development, future development plan, and future land use plan, and it complies in our respects with city's open space and landscaping requirements. Will not create a nuisance or be incompatible, and will not negatively affect adjoining or nearby properties." I just wanted to reiterate that, not for purposes of the record, but just to remind you that from the very beginning, what we're doing, at least in terms of use, was appropriate. It was more than just tweaks. It was major revisions that we had to make, and we've done that. Yeah, I think we finally realized that creating a sense of place, and we've used that, is not as undefinable as we, we thought it was originally, even though it was perplexing to us at first. But rather than rolling the dice in the context of this economy, which could result in buildings going dark, or undevelopment, or buildings not being developed at all, the city has, in essence, whether you wanted to or not, become a partnership with Columbia's stewardship of this, of this property, and we found a middle ground that I think works for the city. From your perspective, it works for Columbia with a few tweaks, as I've mentioned in this presentation. So we do respectfully request that you follow your staff's recommendation with some of the text revisions that I've suggested, and you as a mayor and council approve it as we presented it. Now, I've got two representatives of Columbia, I've got representatives from all the other users, and our project manager here tonight, and I, all of us are available to respond, Mr. Mayor, to any questions that you or the council members may have. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Lenika?
Mr. Sams, thank you for your presentation, and also thank you for your work, again, because of the complexity of this issue, and I think a number of strong-minded individuals on all sides of this equation. I'm not sure anybody but you could have kept this together and reached the conclusion that we're at tonight, so I thank you for that.
Thank you.
For your professionalism and leadership with all of us. I just want to review some general things, and then I've got some more specific questions for the specific tenants. If I heard you correctly, and I just want to make sure you're okay, and you've got a copy, I guess, of, let me ask this, do you have a copy of Ken Sudrith's latest memorandum to us with his proposed list of stipulations?
Yes, sir.
As of this evening? And in general, and I want to go through some specifics, you're okay with those stipulations on behalf of your applicants?
Except to the extent that I mentioned in my presentation, yes, sir.
Right. So specifically, number 15, which talks about Krispy Kreme having an independent monument sign, and some criteria related to that, you're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
And number 16, just says that wall signage shall be governed by the city's sign code. You're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Number 19 updates the site plan to the one submitted on March 25. Is that the latest, latest one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, there'll be another one that will reflect the stained and stamped concrete provision, but yes, sir, that's the latest that we've submitted.
And number 20 talks about the architectural style, composition, and treatment in conformity with the elevations submitted on March 22, 2013. Are those the latest elevations that we have?
Yes, sir, they are. Except for the elevations that Mr. Sudrith showed you tonight, that show the 3D view.
Right. So I'm guessing, Mr. Sudrith, we probably should note elevations submitted on March 22, 2013, and April 1, 2013. With the exception of a wall sign, I think that you mentioned on the AutoZone.
I don't know if you have to add that. What was given to us today was sort of a supplemental aspect, just to show how they would look in conjunction when they were all built next to each other.
Okay, but they're not meant to be controlling, then?
They are not meant to be controlling.
Okay.
I think the individual things are the controlling aspect, and they tried to use that in that sort of 3D vision. I think it'd be easier for all if we just stuck to the individuals.
All right. If you could stay there, because I'm going to have some other questions that involve both you and Mr. Sams. Stipulation number 21 was struck. Mr. Sams, you're okay with that, dealing with the roof structures?
Yes, sir.
Number 23 was added, which talked about the traffic light improvement. You're suggesting that we add a sentence which indicates that the financial responsibility for the applicants will be capped at $2,500 maximum?
Well, and specifically relate to the vehicle actuation detection devices for the racetrack side. Yes, sir.
And I guess I'd like to ask Mr. Sudrith for his thoughts on recommendation, whether we should accept that suggestion?
Yeah, the issue of the money, I would leave to Cory Engineering, and you may want to ask them. In terms of what we always wanted them to take care of, that's indeed what it was. It had to do with, with the triggering of the light.
All right.
So once that is done, I think that's all we've intended to be their responsibility.
I think you just made a good suggestion. We have Don Hicks from Cory Engineering in the meeting room tonight, and I'll subsequently ask him about the dollar amount to see if that's adequate. Mr. Sams, stipulation number 24 was added to just unify the masonry components of the buildings. You're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Number 25 was added, which talked about the walkability aspects and the stamped and stained concrete crosswalks that'll be added through the development.
Yes, sir.
You're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Number 26, add some additional uses that shall not be permitted. And you've got some concerns with the last bullet point, which is, I'm reading here verbatim, freestanding drive-through restaurants. You've got some concerns about how that might be interpreted.
I think, I think it may drive away some of the very restaurants or uses that you're trying to attract to the site.
I guess I'd like to ask Mr. Sudrith for his comments or recommendations to us about that, or is that a question for the city attorney, or?
Well, all of the items that have been referenced, in terms of having the ability to have a takeout option, to my knowledge, are takeout options, where you drive up, you park. Now, they may bring it to your car, but there's not a true drive-through associated with any of those restaurants, where you're, you're coming up to a window, and there's, you're ordering in a box, or any of that kind of stuff. So I'm not sure I completely agree with their concerns associated with that, using the examples. I would say, I understand their concern, that we don't want to inadvertently have something occur. You know, I mean, we could sit here and sort of debate that issue all night, as to what's the correct wording on that. The point here is no different than the original point I made a couple of weeks ago, and that is trying to preclude a domino effect of similar-type uses out there. You know, certain uses, you know, cause other uses to come as well. And that's what I think we're trying to eliminate, so that we don't end up with a bunch of auto-centric uses out there, which is what we're, what we have here, which is, we've finally gotten into an acceptable point because of the uniformity changes and the pedestrian issues and architectural stuff associated with that. I'm not sure that we want them all to be that way. And that's what, that's what I'm after. That's what I'm recommending. That's why I've recommended that, to be deleted as a possibility.
Ken, can I ask a question, and not want to muddy the water or cloud the issue? Is a pharmacy, a CVS, Walgreens, can that go there?
Yes.
Can a bank go there?
Yes.
Then do we allow, and I don't want to mess this up, but a CVS would have a drive-through.
Yes.
A bank would have a drive-through.
Yes.
Would that restrict those from being placed in there by saying?
And that's why, that's why I specifically tried to word it, in that it was a freestanding drive-through restaurant. That's the issue that we are trying to control. You know, yes, there's a lot of businesses that have drive-throughs. You've named several. I'm not, those, those are different. I'm not, I'm not saying or advocating that that be put on the prohibitive list.
Yeah, and, you know, I agree, you and your staff've done a great job getting to where we're at now, but let's say that a Crystal went there without a drive-through, would that be okay? A freestanding Crystal?
Well, the issue, remember, part of the reason that they're here is because they have a multi-tenant building originally approved, and they're going to a freestanding building.
Right.
So if they wanted to have another freestanding building on one of the other parcels that we're not talking about tonight, they'd have to come back anyway.
Okay.
For that.
Yeah.
Regardless of the drive-through aspect.
Yeah.
I guess Mr. Sams following up on this discussion and conversation. I'd like to get your thoughts. I kind of see two directions we could maybe go. One is to say, if there was, pick one of the restaurants that you named that happened to have a takeout component. And all restaurants make a certain amount of their money and margin, excuse me, by the nature of having takeout food, you know, that they sell to their patrons. Is that something that could be defined if there was such a restaurant that wanted to come, and there was some sort of tangle, that the staff and the council and the applicant might be able to work that out and handle it, as opposed to the second option, which would be to try to reword this to indicate something with a designated, defined, drive-through lane and operation, and speakers, and more typical of a typical fast-food drive-through business, part of the overall business? How do you think we should try to approach that? Either just?
I think.
Try to be more specific with the language, or just say, "We'll work it out if it ever comes up"?
I'm afraid that "we'll work it out if it ever comes up" places staff in an unusually difficult position. And from a marketing perspective, if Outlook comes, you know, we want the site, can we, can we go there? Well, you know, we kind of don't know. We kind of work it out. And I'm not, I'm not being facetious. I just, I just think that may be untenable. I'd prefer that it be defined by policy.
Maybe what I'd like to ask is see if you and Mr. Sudrith, and/or Mr. Cochran, the city attorney, during the course of this hearing, before we come to a vote, can agree on some clarifying language for that bullet point that would be acceptable to all the parties.
We can either do that, or if a motion were made to approve it, and then it would be subject to us getting together, and the three of us, or with the client, or whatever, and then that one issue come back to you for approval, might make more sense than trying to have a confab tonight to do that.
That's a good suggestion. I guess, let me ask our city attorney right now if legally we could do that, approve a motion, if that was the wish of the council, with some wording in the motion yet to be worked out and defined?
Yeah, we could do that, but I'll tell you, I'll work on it during the meeting. We might, maybe we can get something done during the meeting. But if we can't, we can, we could have that as part of the motion.
Okay. I'm just trying to sort of establish, Mr. Sams, what, what's on the table for the council. So with the exception of that part of number 26, the additional stipulation added, you're okay with the remainder of the stipulation?
With the convenience stores, we have a covenant not to compete with racetracks, so that, that's really moot. We would ask the tire stores, oil change shops, also be, make conditional as opposed to prohibited uses. In other words, we would still have to come back to you for approval of those, as opposed to prohibited uses.
I'd ask Mr. Cochran if he could work on those issues during the course of this hearing, then. And stipulation number 27, which was added, talks about meeting the appropriate site development standards for the South Cobb Drive corridor design district, except those previously mentioned in the both stipulations. You're okay with that language?
Yes, sir.
I would like to kind of go through the site plan, and maybe each of the three applicants a little bit, individual stores. Which one would you like to start with?
Probably be best to bring the project manager, Mr. David Shanahan, up here, and then he can legislate or delegate out the responses after that. So I'll swear him in when he comes up. This is David Shanahan of the Trilogy Group.
We got one question while, hold on, before you swear me in, got this little sting like this.
If I could, Mr. Sams.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm interpreting this freestanding as that there's no available inside seating?
No, ma'am. Freestanding means it's not attached to another building, or it's not an inline retail. It's a freestanding building, not attached, not attached to anything is what that means.
Yeah, but where it says drive-through, because, I mean, I know that there are some that would meet that description, like over on Powers Ferry, but they're usually very small, and probably would not be adaptable to this site plan anyway.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shanahan, for being here tonight, and for all your hard work on this. Let me just ask a few clarifying questions and get your thoughts on this. Start with Krispy Kreme on the South Cobb Drive side. Just speaking personally, for me, that's the most institutional of the three buildings in its appearance, with the big windows that go from floor to ceiling. It looks like from the rendering stainless or metal. Yeah, window frames. The other two buildings have masonry or stone bands sort of across the bottom of the windows. Is it possible Krispy Kreme could agree to do something similar across the bottom of theirs, just to make it look less institutional in its appearance, and maybe more like the other stores?
Two things. Let's take a, perhaps take a step back, and the, each, each of the individual users are, actually are represented here. Our, our client, we actually have two clients here. One is in relationship with Columbia Properties, and we also happen to represent Del Taco. Mike Neal is here, who represents Krispy Kreme. From a, from a process standpoint, and I, I understand your, I understand your question, I'm not sure that I do understand institutional. sure that I do understand institutional. But we're, to a great extent, I think we're getting very, we've managed to get to the point where we're very subjective, which is unavoidable, which, to be honest, goes, the fact that we're here now and we're at what would appear to be close to the end of this process, I think is a testimony to the work of Ken and Rusty, is we sort of avoided the, that very subjective, I like this, I don't like that. Actually, the materials that did appear on the Krispy Kreme, they actually appear on the other proposed buildings as well. It's really just more a function of how they're utilized. Now, as to whether Krispy Kreme would be interested in or able to make adjustments to how they're putting their storefront in place, I honestly, I can't address that. Perhaps Mike would do that for us.
I guess I'd.
Are we going down the road? Are we going to talk about individual architectural items?
I'd like to talk about that issue with that particular building, and also just ask questions about, do they plan to install any particular landscaping either around the building itself and/or around the monument sign? And if so, could they define their thoughts on what that would look like?
Okay. Let me, just in terms of kind of moving things along, we can do, we can do this one of two ways. I can ask Mike to address the issues specific to Krispy Kreme. I can much more accurately address the issues associated with Del Taco and Autozone, because I've handled more of that directly. So to the extent that you have questions on those, too, be happy to address them now. Or I can step aside and Mike could perhaps address your questions on Krispy Kreme.
Well, you know, we can switch to the other two uses. Do those buildings propose to have any landscaping around those buildings? I'll use the Del Taco on Cobb Parkway as an example, which has some landscaping around the building itself. Will we see anything like that on this site?
There, the answer would be twofold. One, we are, we are agreeing, as I think Garvis has already stipulated, to the overlay district requirements. And number two, and I don't know that it's in this final package, I didn't see it, but we did submit landscape plans. There is a, there is a landscape plan somewhere in the, in the package, and I apologize, I don't know where it is.
Yeah, and I'm just not sure if that's part of what's being approved tonight or disapproved. I mean, is it, is that part of the picture?
My understanding.
So people understand what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Can we describe it at all?
My understanding in terms of the process is what we are addressing tonight are zoning issues, and clearly mixed within this are some very specific items, particular to the buildings, and, which makes for a little bit of a mixed message. Beyond the zoning approval, assuming such an approval, we would, we would be subject to site plan approval on each of the individual sites, which would go through staff. Landscaping, obviously, would be one of those items. We have not fully fleshed out exactly how the landscaping would be executed, because we're not to that point as yet. We're still dealing with zoning.
All right. Would it be better to say as a general point that the three building owners would be open to landscaping around the exterior of the buildings, which I'm not seeing shown on the particular elevations, in discussions with our staff? And let them try to work out what that means and?
I think that's, I think that's reasonable. Actually, if you see the landscape plans as proposed, you would see that.
I see the tree and shrub planting plans and the landscape requirements and all that. It's on page eight, which is the final page of the, when you look in the documents, it's the third, third rendering document. It's.
I would hope that we would, they're getting not to cloud, muddy the water, but I would, we got staff that's going to see this process all the way through. I would hope that they would, as far as a landscape plan goes, that it would, it would meet their approval and.
We submitted, Councilman Linnick and Mr. Mayor, an overall landscape plan that was overlaid on the site plan then. To take it a step further, we asked each individual user to come up with their own landscape plan within the context of those individual parcels, and we have submitted those. I'm sorry, if those individual landscape plans are not before you, but they were very comprehensive and led to Mr. Sudrith and his staff saying that we meet with all the open space and the landscape requirements based upon those submissions. And then, as Mr. Shanahan said, the balance of that as far as fleshing out the species of the vegetation and what's appropriate from an irrigation standpoint, or more functional plan review and interfacing with your arborist.
Yeah, again, I'm just trying to give people in the audience and the ones watching on television or on the internet some idea of what they might expect to see there if this goes forward.
And I do think the overlay that we, that we did, the photographic overlay, that was the point of that. It's representational, and I think you drew a very appropriate line. You know, is it the absolute? No, it's not, but it's representational in terms of when this is built out, what it will look like. And we did add landscaping, which is what will appear when the projects are actually developed.
Let me ask another general site plan question, and I probably should have asked this sooner, but looking at that rendering that we got today, it sort of highlights it. Have you given any thoughts to the guardrail that's on the east-west connector and whether that should stay or go? And if it was pulled out, would the county let you do that?
Yeah, I don't.
And replace it with landscaping or a berm or?
First of all, it's not on private property, as I'm sure you know. It's in the right of way, and it's completely controlled by Cobb DOT. If we could make it, if we could convince the county to, to replace it with something that was just simply better looking.
I'm sure the county would be more than happy to pick up liability if a car went off that and killed someone. I mean, if it's county right of way, I mean, they're not going to let you take down that guardrail.
No.
You know.
Yeah, and I don't know, they might, because, again, when it was a Home Depot landscape supply store, there was a 10 or 15-foot drop there. Today, that drop is just a few feet.
I can only tell you.
The necessity for the guardrail being there seems to have gone away.
By virtue of my experience with the DOT, it's not likely to happen. I wouldn't want to mislead you that I thought that was something that could happen. Be more than happy to talk to them. I happen to agree with you, it's not a very good-looking guardrail. It would be terrific if it was replaced with something that was.
Oh, man, it's beautiful. I mean, you're doing 65 miles an hour down east-west connect, you can't even see it anywhere.
That's true.
Mr. Cochrane, you close to getting that language written up?
Who knows?
Okay.
I guess, would this be an appropriate time to ask Don Hicks with Crow Engineering to come up and address the cost issue with the traffic light?
He's going to, he's going to need to be sworn in.
Mr. Sam.
I will say this while, Ms. Hicks, and this is a personal observation, there again, I don't want to mess this up, but that intersection is responsibility of the city of Smyrna. We approved it. If it's not working, guess what? It's our fault. If there's not the right kind of detection devices there, it's the city's fault. The city approved that intersection when Racetrack was built. I've not had one complaint from Racetrack or Publix about the stacking of vehicles on either side. The only time that I heard about this was at a meeting that we attended at Jim and Nick's, myself, Councilman Linnick, and Councilman Fennel, and I heard that after the meeting, the Smyrna I group was complaining about their employees taking such a long time to get out of there and get home. But, I mean, I appreciate Columbia putting up $2,500, but in my opinion, it's the city's fault. We approved that site plan where Racetrack is. We approved the road going in front rather than going in back. So it's the city's responsibility. So you swear, Mr. Crow, and he can say what he wants to say. And I hope I hadn't messed this up.
I'm in conversations with Cobb County, and I'm trying to recall, they said the cost was going to be anywhere from zero to $8,000. Basically, zero, if they had just had to go out and adjust one of the cameras. If they had to put in a new camera, it'd be on the order of $8,000.
Okay, so we don't know any more than that?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
If you've got any other questions, I know we got Mr. Fennel. Boy, I have a complete total stroke. Mr. Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My questions, I had a pair of them. One, thank you again to the staff for the diligence and the hard work, and I think as a component of the stipulations that were brought forward, I think it is evidence of both the council's interest and willingness to make a resolution of the application to get a project underway. We appreciate also Columbia Properties and all of the parties, and Mr. Sam's, for your diligence in making these facilitated conversations result in us being here tonight. My questions, one, went back to the original challenge that I had, and the mayor just reiterated what the challenge is, and that's the intersection at Gaylor that concerns a lot of us who live west of the site, down the Silver Comet Parkway, who will be using the site and the businesses that locate ultimately on that site. And it's the westbound egress, one of those, and perhaps we could, David, perhaps you could address that, just for your client, the Del Taco, their comfort level with the egress model that that represents for the client base that they intend to serve, or is there a high enough confidence level that they've signed an agreement and are willing to locate on that site, given what the constraints of the physical egress points are?
Good question, and we went through the entire system with them, so they fully understood the site. Actually drove them through it, used the intersection, made the left end, circulated through the site. It has been, the site has been approved by real estate, it's been approved by their executive committee, the deal is ready to go. So the answer would be, they know their business better than we do.
Right.
And they are satisfied with the way that the system is designed and operates.
Okay. I didn't want them to buy into something, nor did you, that would not have had them think through it, visualize it, learn it, and buy into what ultimately will be the operational day-to-day, because the last thing you want to see is a failed business on a site that, you know, all of us put a lot of time, effort, and thought into preparing.
And I would, I would also reiterate that Racetrack had the same issues.
Right.
Went through the same process. I represented Smyrna I, they are longtime friends of ours. We walked through the whole process, and I think the issue that you're referring to is the weak link. We have the main line, which drives the, takes the vast majority of the time available to make any kind of movements at that intersection.
Right.
DOT, and rightly so, they are not going to allow any diminution of the level of service through that intersection. So you only have so much time to allocate to the Racetrack Smyrna I side, and so much time to allocate to the Gaylor side. Given that, it seems to operate at an acceptable level.
Okay. And perhaps the second question might be better addressed to, maybe Mr. O'Neal, I don't know, or Mr. Campbell, but let me just toss it out there, because I think the Brain Trust is working on a potential solution over here. But it is the differentiation between our intent by making the restriction on number 26 relative to freestanding drive-through restaurants, as opposed to a quick-serve restaurant, which is, I think, the goal of us for a prohibited, at least our targeted prohibitive, quick-serve, fast food, as it were, under the common vernacular, but quick-serve in the industry, versus a casual dining, which would be the Chili's or the Carrabba's and that sort of thing. Distinctly, one has more of a sit-down, bulk-of-their-volume business is in the restaurant itself, food and beverage, as opposed to a preponderance of fast food or quick-serve restaurants taking the pickup or a drive-through component.
Well, another, another restaurant that just came to mind when I just rezoned from Acres Mill Square is Zoe's Kitchen also that has that component. But let me tell you what we just discussed, and I'm sorry that we're multitasking here, but.
All right.
We need to get you through your agenda, and that is, and Andy Campbell of Columbia Properties, we would like the opportunity to sit down with Mr. Cochrane and Mr. Sudrith and Mr. Campbell and Mr. O'Neal, Shanahan and I, to craft language so that it's very clear. And Mr. Cochrane procedurally has figured out a way to do that, that is, to be dispositive with respect to the zoning issue tonight, with that one issue, to come back to you for your review and approval of the language that we ultimately concur and agree upon.
Excellent. Thank you.
And it's not trying to evade or avoid the issue tonight, it's just making sure we get it right.
Fair point. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Linnick, I know we got one person that is, that was sworn in. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Corky, I'm sorry. Mr. Welch.
This is without a doubt the, the most comprehensive work that we've done on a rezoning issue since, since I've been on this, in this position. And I would like to say, you know, that I'd like to at least commend the developers and our staff, but, but the developers have, have worked to make some changes. When this, this first came to us six weeks ago, I was prepared to vote against the issue. But to go back to Krispy Kreme and Autozone and Del Taco and get them to change brick colors and to give this development a sense of, of one unit now, I think they've gone a long ways toward making it something that, that is acceptable. And I'd just like to thank them all for that. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll close.
We got one person that was sworn in. If you please step forward, identify who you are and where you live at, and any comments that you'd like to make.
Hi, my name's Brian Boover. I live at 4893 Delford Court, which is right near the development, actually. It's in the Woodland Brook Development. Before I get into it, I was hoping that you could bring up, or someone that knows how to do it could bring up the sidewalk or the crosswalk design.
Some of the crosswalk within the development?
Yes. And while he's doing that, I just want to say, you know, thank you to, you know, I worked directly with Ron and Wade, and I want to say thank you to both of you for putting the time and effort in. I know a lot of people in the neighborhood, all the neighborhoods around there, had a lot of, you know, discussions and complaints, and, you know, I want to thank community planning and even, you know, you know, everyone pretty much that was involved in the city that I may not know was involved, and obviously Columbia Properties. Really quickly, I want to say that, you know, the city I grew up in, this kind of thing was very common, because it was a very high-end community, and, and every single building that would go in, you know, had months of deliberation over every little detail. And I want to say that, you know, this is a breath of fresh air in the community. I hope to see more of it. I know it's tough for everybody involved, but it's not abnormal. I mean, if you go to the Main Street in Alpharetta, you can see it, you know, I don't go to the city hall meetings or anything, but it's very clear, there's that kind of control there, there's that kind of, there has been that kind of control on Atlanta Road. This is a new development in a new area. It's grown very quickly to over 12,000 people, as Wade mentioned to me once. And 10 years ago, there was almost no one here. There was almost nothing there. There was no overlays, there's, it's pretty much all starting from scratch, and people had to work together to come up with a vision for the area. The main asset there is a Silver Comet Trail. So as far as sense of place, the trail is the closest thing we had to, to a sense of place there. Obviously, at this point now, there's high-end luxury houses, and, you know, they're the most common thing around there, so, you know, all of a sudden, everybody's really picky about what goes in there, and that must be strange for some people that, anyway. The side, you had the sidewalks on, like, he had red lines where the sidewalks were going to be. And, you know, because this is brand-new and everyone's worked hard on it, unfortunately, a lot of the people in the community haven't seen the latest thing that came out, the 20-Fit, so. But, you know, one, one point of feedback I want to get is I just want to make sure that we had a proper connection over to. had a proper connection over the Silver Comet Trail, and I know there's going to be future deliberations on these sidewalks, on the crosswalks, sorry. And, you know, if you look at the other side of the street, there is quite a bit of traffic of people coming from the Silver Comet Trail and going to eat at places, and originally in the design, I think that was overlooked. And I'm looking at this one connection, and I'm thinking that because of the main connection over east-west from the corner there, I don't know how that would tie in with the guardrail, but one thing I brought up originally was, there needs to be some kind of trail along the edge of this development. I know that's not privately-owned property, but I was wondering if there was any consideration of that, and how that would tie in maybe to the other corner of the property. I see that there's one tie-in for people on the right side. The other point I brought up before was bike accessibility, because this is right by the Silver Comet Trail, and I just wanted to make sure that there was some consideration of how bike, people on their bikes would get in there, and will they have a place to lock their bikes up? You know, and obviously, as the project manager mentioned, we're getting into details on this, that is a good sign. So that covers four of my points. I wanted to ask if outdoor seating was still in the design. I wanted to ask about car washes and tire changes, tire change places, and why we need that even, you know, in the, why that still can't be prohibited, and why it has, I don't, there's no tire change place going in, and I wouldn't want to see a tire change place or car wash so close to where all of us live. It's kind of like a poor use of the property, so I'm wondering why that is, is there a car wash going in, or if not, why isn't that still on the prohibited list? I agree with Ken Sudrith, that takeout is not drive-through, they're two different things. So far, it's the wording, I hope that gets worked out, but definitely don't want to see something like a kiosk put on the property. I agree with Wade about the Krispy Kreme. I was kind of disappointed about the design of it, and maybe it's not the design as much as how the design matches the other buildings on the property. And I still, you know, the setback of the two middle buildings seems kind of suburban to me, and doesn't match the setback of the other buildings. Wondering if there's a reason for that, and if not, could some of that parking be moved to the back of those buildings? And the final point is, you know, this is kind of something I brought up, and I know it is separate from this overall development plan, but something for the city. At this point, our, and this is the last thing, at this point, our, this part of the city is pretty much done. I mean, this is the last bit of land that was left to be developed. If you look across the street, if you look at the whole intersection, it looks kind of, from a landscaping perspective, looks kind of rundown, and I was hoping that, you know, somewhere in that intersection, across the street maybe, on the, either on the state-owned land on one corner, or on the Publix corner, if there could be some landscaping and a monument of some sort, long-term, like a fountain or something of that nature, that ties into the Silver Comet Trail, maybe connects over to this development and to Publix, and finishes the part of the city, it's a gateway to our community. And I know that there's a cost associated with that, but I was hoping, long-term, there could be some kind of movement towards getting something there. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. I think that was the only person that, Mr. Fennel?
Mr. Boever, thank you again for your kind remarks and recognizing the hard work that a lot of people put in, and you raise a couple of points that I think it's helpful for the developers of the site to recognize, and I think they have, because they are, in essence, a part of the community, as owners of that property. You know, we've been waiting well over five years, and now this application process has been some five months of the most recent iteration, so I know we're all, we've all been waiting and working toward some sort of a conclusion where we can see some activity on the site, because the last thing, that corridor, which has grown dramatically in residential population, and some commercial up to about five years ago, now is poised to make the next fulfillment of its mission. And while we miss the landscape center being convenient, we're looking forward to the rebirth for what its next life will be as a site. But the fact that it is attracting as a community around the Silver Comet Trail, as Mr. Boever pointed out, is important for customer recognition for your businesses. The bikeability, walkability, the aspect of it that will be a part of it. I know that your businesses that you've recruited are going to focus your attention on luring that customer base there, so I think those were great points mentioned that might be a component of recommendations going forward. For those of us who live out there and who have seen so many people coming in that direction for a long time, there's been a great deal of anticipation about this site, and we've all been aspirational about it, much like I know Mr., you know, Mr. Sams has mentioned many times about how hard everyone's worked, but when Dan O'Neal and the team go ask everybody, everybody, to come join them on that site and ask for their investment, and then five or so years later, you know, we're still not 100% occupied, it becomes a challenge for us. But again, aspirational. Smyrna is an aspirational city. We believe in better, more logical, more sensitive, more sensible development. We're happy that three Fortune 500 companies have agreed with that, and we appreciate your respective companies and what you've done to invest in it, and we believe that this is an opportunity for us to take a step. But I do want you to hear all of those things as you're talking to your customers and as you continue to recruit for that site. We believe this site is better than any other site available in Cobb County and probably in the metro region, so we have high hopes for whatever the next businesses you're able to lure, to recruit to this site will be. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Lunk?
Mr. Cochran, were you able to work out any language on that stipulation?
Well, I think what they wanted, well, I know what they want to do is rather than come up with language tonight, and I did work out some language, but they, rather than review that kind of in the heat of the hearing, they want to have an opportunity to sit down with staff, and for Garvis and I to sit down with Ken and some others, to make sure that we can come to a, not just wording of something, but actually an agreement as to what they're, what we're trying to accomplish here, which I think makes sense. The little bit of the problem is procedurally how to do that and still comply with the Zoning Procedures Act and City Code and all. So what I recommend that you guys do is, is, part of your motion include stipulations 1 through 25 and stipulation 27. Those are all the stipulations that, you know, Ken went over. And as far as, all the dialogue here deals with stipulation 26, what I recommend is that the motion, if it's a motion to approve, would be made subject to us meeting and getting consensus on stipulation 26. And then, and this is kind of the weird part, then as to that issue, let's table just that issue, that is, because I think council will need to approve whatever staff comes up with with this, we'll table that issue to the next meeting.
So that would be, if this was, if the motion and the council were to approve the request, there would be a second motion to table stipulation number 26?
Right, well, the motion would be subject to the stipulations and subject to...
We'd do it all as one motion?
Yeah, yeah, you do it in one motion, and it'd be subject to the stipulations 1 through 25 and stipulation 27, and then also subject to resolution of the content of stipulation 26. Yeah, and that's, the reason I say you table that is because the council would want to approve that anyway, that because this is bigger than, I think, that you want to just give staff the ability to come up with what's prohibited and what's not. The council needs to approve it.
If the applicant is agreeable to that, I say, Mr. Lunk, I'll make your motion and include those 1 through 25 and 27, and 26 comes back, where we table that.
Does that work?
Mr. Sams, is the suggestion that Mr. Cochran has made in terms of tabling number 26 to the April 15 meeting, if this is moved to approve, meet with your approval?
It does, as long as, and I don't want to assume something that hasn't even been moved yet, but as long as the approval for these particular uses and all the other stipulations that we've agreed to and you all concur with, that that component, those components can go forward, and that the only thing to come back after our discussions with staff and your city attorney is that stipulation 26. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, same thing I said.
All right, Mr. Lenica?
Your Honor, at this time, I do want to thank all the parties involved, Mr. O'Neal, Mr. Campbell, Ms. Shanahan, everybody representing the three individual uses, and our staff and attorney, and I'd like to thank the council, because everybody has invested a lot of time and effort into this. We started late last year with the staff predisposition at the time, which later was formalized to deny this application. Through a number of meetings and give-and-take on all sides, we've reached a point where the staff is now recommending approval, and that's a great testament to a lot of hard work by an awful lot of people. It's not perfect, nothing in our life ever is. God made us human, and thereby, we're not perfect, and most plans aren't perfect either. There certainly are some things that I would change if I could, and I'd ask for consideration as this moves forward from the applicants. We don't control it, but we can work with you and help you. I think the guardrail is superfluous at this point, now that the grade's been raised, and I think that unless the engineers come back and say the guardrail is necessary for some reason, we ought to both work together with Cobb County, see if at some point we can get that guardrail removed and replaced with landscaping, or whatever might be more suitable for the site. You know, I do hope the individual structures will be landscaped appropriately around the buildings through the plan review and approval process, as well as the signage, the monument sign for Krispy Kreme. I would ask the Krispy Kreme folks to consider whether there should be masonry or stone along the bottom of the windows, because I do feel, and Mr. Boever has seconded, he had the same impression, and we haven't talked about this, but, you know, that's a different look than the other buildings, and it might be, in my opinion, more attractive to do it differently. I don't think that would take away from the overall structure or success of that site. I think this is a great site. I think Mr. Campbell and O'Neal have taken a great risk many years ago to invest in the site and work with the community, and long-term, we'd love nothing better than to see them be very successful financially and otherwise, and to have these businesses and them become involved in our community, and supporting our community, and serving the citizens of our community, in whatever way the uses on the site permit. I know Mr. Sams had recommended that we cap stipulation number 23 at a $2,500 maximum. I think, based on the testimony of Don Hicks at Croy, I'm uncomfortable doing that, and I'm uncomfortable with the city funding a traffic light for private development. So my motion will be to approve Z12009 zoning amendment, zoning request, for a modification of the currently approved site plans and building elevations on a 6.42 acre tract located in Land Lot 620 and 677 at 4560 South Cobb Drive, owned by Columbia Properties Incorporated, subject to stipulations 1 through 25 as presented tonight, and stipulation number 27 as presented tonight. Also, with stipulation number 26, being subject to a later consensus between the applicant and city staff and the city attorney on the content and exact wording of that stipulation, and approval of that stipulation to be tabled until the next council meeting on April 15, 2013.
Add 27.
Yeah, I said add 27 as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
A motion by Mr. Lenica, seconded by Mr. Fennel. Is there any further discussion? Although in favor of the motion, please vote. Seven yays, that's approved, seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel?
Mr. Sams, thank you for all your help in this process. It has been a difficult and challenging process, I guess is a better word, challenging.
It has been. Thank you so much.
Item 5 is privileged licenses. A public hearing approval of change of agent-owner for a pawn dealership license for personal jury loans located at 2800 Spring Road to agent-owner Kenneth Porter, is he here tonight? Please step forward, background please, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Mayor, this item is actually a carryover from the previous meeting. It was tabled, so we could hear testimony from Mr. Porter. But what he's doing is, he's applied for a pawn dealership license for new agent-owner for Kenneth Porter. The former agent-owner was Darlene Brown. Mr. Porter will be the registered agent, and he's looking to operate a pawn shop for the purpose of making jewelry loans. He will be the registered agent responsible for the operation of this business, and if background investigation was conducted by the Smyrna Police Department and fails to reveal any information, that would preclude issuance of the license. Mr. Porter's been a resident of Cobb County for more than a year. He's agreed to abide by the guidelines set forth by the City of Smyrna ordinance governing the operation of a pawn shop, and therefore, we do recommend approval.
I take your, Mr. Kenneth Porter?
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this privileged license for a personal jewelry loan? But the record show there is none. Send Ms. Pritchett forward. Ms. Pritchett?
Yes, ma'am, it's already open. I'm getting myself involved into the jury business. I've worked back years ago at Service Merchandise, where I was a store manager there, in the jury business, and I just love the jury business. And I got out of that business and got into retail, retail. Then I dabbled back into it again last year. I've known the owner of the jury partner for a long time, so I'm going to get into the other side of that business. I need to retire, so I'm trying to figure out how I can retire a little bit earlier than 62 and 1/2. Well, if you come in and you need to sell your jury, and you don't really want to sell it, and you say, "Well, I need to borrow some money, can I leave my jury here with you?" And I'll loan you money on your jury until you can recoup the jury back. Yes, ma'am. Ma'am? Well, we call, we give them all the opportunities to come back to pick up their jury. I'd rather for them to get their jury back than to me to have to go out and sell it. Yes, yes, ma'am. At some point in time, they don't, yes, ma'am, we will have to sell it. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Oh, we'll still be my jewelry, this is a separate entity. I will be doing the personal jury side of the business. Look, yes, ma'am, same building, yes, ma'am. Oh, no, ma'am, no, ma'am, it won't be anything.
Seconded by Mr. Welch. Any discussion? Any discussion?
You feel like you're being left out? We just spent an hour and a half on the last one.
No, I don't, I'm perfectly fine with it. Thank you, sir.
It was probably an education, wasn't it?
It was.
Yeah, don't get into development business. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Seven zero, that's approved. Thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Item six is formal business, A is appointment of Ward Five Board Member to Parks and Recreation Commission, Ms. Wilkinson.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Jason Saliba for the Parks and Recreation Board for Ward Five.
A motion by Ms. Wilkinson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lenica to appoint Jason Saliba. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, seven zero. Item six B under formal business, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, to award RFP 13-020 for food truck event coordinator and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Will be tabled until the 15th. Mrs. Nunnellwich, if you'll please make that motion, that'd be great.
I will, and I wanted to just make a quick comment also because I know that I've been getting questions about when food trucks are going to begin, and I know I'm not the only person up here who's been getting those questions. I hope by tabling this agenda item tonight, we don't cause any frustration among Smyrna's food truck fans. I think it's been covered many times that the event was more successful than anyone ever could have predicted, and a lot of cities in the metro area now model their food truck events after ours. You know, because of this quick success, we learned a lot, and we learned as we went along because that's what we had to do. I've mentioned before, all the departments that work so well together, police, parks, community relations, to name a few, they did amazing, amazing jobs. We have a lot of events in Smyrna. We have the birthday celebration and fireworks. We have the summer concert series. We have the spring and fall jocko festivals. All of these draw on parks employees, public safety employees, all kinds of city staff, and I wanted to thank them again for everything that they do to make all of these events that we offer in the city such an amazing success and that really contribute to Smyrna's very unique sense of place. We talked about that in the earlier agenda item, and, and I know we've, we've come to it again and again, but it's because it's critical to our identity. We, we have this sense of place, and I think Food Truck Tuesday has really encapsulated so much of what makes us a special place to live. So we do want to make sure that the event is run as well as possible to the benefit of our residents and to the city. If you're evaluating, you quantify return on investment based on the social media reach we've gotten from this, based on earned media, that is, the press that the event has received throughout, throughout the months that we had the event this previous season, it's, it's a huge return that we get on this, and it's, and people love it. So again, part of the reason that we're tabling this is because we want to be very thoughtful about how we curate this event. We want to be thoughtful about how the event is marketed. We want to be thoughtful in maintaining the integrity of the event and as a community because it is one of the components that works to establish our sense of place, and we want to continue the positive momentum that our community has had over the past many years. So again, that's why we're tabling this, and with that, I do motion to table event, I'm sorry, agenda item six B, which is RFP 13-020 to award RFP, RFP 13-020 for food truck event coordinator and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Nunnellwich, seconded by Ms. Pritchett to table. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, seven zero. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is consent agenda. Mr. Taylor, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Your honor, we have four items up for consent agenda this evening. Item A is an approval of the March 18, 2013, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B is the award RFQ 12-021 to Hill Company Incorporated for D humidification system. This is for the unit only, for the Wolf Center pool in the amount of $116,500, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all documents. Item C is to approve the amended Mass Mutual 457 Plan documents and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item D is the approval of the Atkins Park 11th Annual Crawfish Boil, April 27 to 28, 2013. That includes road closings for this event.
Here, motion, we approve the consent agenda.
One more.
Motion by Mr. Fennel, seconded by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, seven zero. Before we get into committee reports, I failed to mention during the mayor's report the dedication of the Ken Nix Field, which will be Wednesday night at 6:30 at Tolleson Park. That is at 6:30, I believe. Is that correct? 6:30 Wednesday night, the dedication of that ball field in memory of Ken Nix. We'll start tonight, Mr. Ron Fennel. Mr. Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From a public safety perspective, do we have either of the department heads here? I don't think we do. I don't see the back there. If you'll do what I do on a regular basis, I want you to thank the men and women in uniform and some out of uniform who are dedicated to public safety to help protect our families, our homes, and our businesses. Just stop and say thank you to them. We appreciate what they do every day. I have one personal item to note, a celebration within my family. Thursday, I was privileged to celebrate the 10th anniversary of being married to my beautiful bride who I discovered in Smyrna Heights, who lured me to Smyrna, and I'm happy to be here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Before we thank our public safety, I want to thank community development. I think the last six months has probably been worse than being on the front line of fire or fighting a fire or shooting at bad guys, so thank you, Ken. I know if I didn't like you, I wouldn't cut up with you. Mr. Wade Lenica, now you can leave.
Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Sudra. Just want to remind folks, signs are up on Atlanta Road. There will be a public hearing this Wednesday night, which is April 3, beginning at 6:30 at Bronner Hall to talk about the proposed median project for South Atlanta Road. This will be for the portion of Atlanta Road from Spring and Concord Road on the north, south to the city limits at Ridge Road. Based on the last public hearing, which was August of 2011, design changes were made based on the input and concerns we heard. Is it better than it was? Yes. Is it good enough? We'll find out Wednesday night when we ask the public to review it and give us their feedback and share any concerns or questions they have. We'll certainly be set up and ready to go by 6:30, and we'll have a presentation starting around 7:00, and you know, we'll stay as late as people want to stay and talk. But you know, the important thing is the plan gets better with input from everybody, and the plan that we'll show Wednesday night is better because of the input we had in August of 2011. And if this is the right plan to go forward with, then it's already funded in the 2005 SPOLOST program. That money is set aside and waiting on approval to move forward with it. So again, Wednesday, April 3, starting at 6:30, Bronner Hall, Taylor Bronner Park. If you want to see the median plans and provide input to staff and engineers, or me or anyone else, please come and attend. The plans are also available on the City of Smyrna website. You can find them there in a PDF format. With that, I hope everyone had a great Easter holiday or Passover and look forward to hopefully some better weather now that we're actually seeing some sunshine. With that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
As Chair of the Parks and Recreation Committee, I'd like to announce two public meetings for the Parks Master Plan. This will be the 2013 to 2023 Master Plan for the next 10 years. And the two public input meetings, one is going to be Thursday evening, April the 4th at 7:00 PM, and the second meeting will be April 13th at 10:00 AM on a Saturday. And this public, this is a needs assessment, and they will be taking input from the public for the, for these, this new Parks Master Plan. So, and with that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe we have a formal report from Public Works or from Keep Smyrna Beautiful this evening, but I know Ann has got a adopted mile cleanup. I believe it is on the 20th of this month. That's a Saturday. If one would remember to keep their, their calendars open for that date and come volunteer and help us clean up the streets. And not to be outdone by Mr. Fennel, but this past week, I celebrated my 31st anniversary to my lovely wife, Catherine.
Thank you, Ms. Terry Nunnellwich.
Yes, we don't have any committee reports tonight, but I wanted to let everyone know that I post news and information updates related to Ward Three on the Ward Three Facebook page several times a week. It's facebook.com/teriwardthree, T-E-R-I-W-A-R-D, and the number three. It is a public page. You do not need to have a Facebook account in order to view the information on the page. You just go to your browser, type in facebook.com/teriwardthree, and it'll take you right to all the little nuggets of joy of Ward Three that I bring everybody several times a week. With that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
She always comes up with something, you know, that I, I can't do because I don't do Facebook. But I don't have a formal report this evening. I did want to thank Mr. Sudra for all of his hard work, and I hope that each of you had a very happy Easter or happy Passover, and with that, I yield.
Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I do not have a report tonight. Thank you.
Anything, Mr. Taylor? Mr. Cochran? Our city clerk, Terry Graham? Nothing? All right. We do not have a show cause hearing. We got several people signed up for citizens input. Mr. Alec Bakary, 3459 Shawnee Trail, comments for his topic.
Approximately four months ago, I brought it up to this council that there's a sign company on Concord Road that's been a vendor, on the vendor list for the city for the last 11 years, has never received a call to bid on any of the signs for events, et cetera, and reminding them that the business goes to a company outside the city limits on Atlanta Road. I don't understand why the city is not supporting, all things equal, the vendor, the people that pay taxes in the city. It makes no sense to me that a company outside the city is getting all the business, and yet this sign company in Smyrna is not getting any bids, and I hope from tonight, the council person for this ward goes over and finds out why he is not getting some comparison rates for the city, because if you only have one person getting all the, company getting all the business, you don't know if it's reasonable or what have you. It's nice checks and balances, and again, the city has to support the people that have the businesses inside the city. Secondly, I don't know how, as Mr. Lenica mentioned, they're going to expand Atlanta Road with the splash. To my understanding, you have $2.8 million of splash money. Now, that hasn't even started, the approximately $5 million to do the construction on Concord Road. I'm not sure, I'd love to get an update on how many businesses are still left to be bought out, where the money's going to come up, if it's even anywhere near close to $2.8 million when Concord Road is built or expanded. It's just sad since '05 that it's taken eight years to get to this point, when we could have had some lights put up, especially like McCully coming into Concord and a few other widening, maybe turn areas. That's all Concord needed, and now that projected cost is going to be almost $20 million alone. In the future, I hope when splash has come up, I'm going to be voting against it because we never had any say in any of this, how it was. We had your first town hall meeting last year since '08, and now we're going on Atlanta Road with handmade bricks and expansion of Atlanta Road from Concord down towards Ridge. I see no problems why we have to do that, and I'll look forward to Wednesday night. But to have only 2.8, I'd like someone to explain where all this extra splash money's coming from that don't, at the moment, is not in the, in the bank, according to the city. Thank you very much.
Oleg Even Tuin, I messed that name up, but it's okay. 1406 Hornell Lane, Smyrna, 30082.
It's always okay. I don't think you'll ever say it right, but it's fine. Last time I was here was several months ago, and I came here to talk about that structure that you guys purchased on Concord Road, unfinished building. And I've been driving by this structure every single day, taking my son to daycare, and when I was here, I was talking to you and asking you, why do you want to buy it? What are you going to do with it? And then soon after, it came on the market, and as of today, I saw a for sale sign in there, and I don't know what's going on with it, but at the time, I was questioning the motivation. Is the city in the business of buying and selling real estate? And how exactly, you know, you want to speculate and make some money on the market? And if you're doing that, maybe we should all talk, because I'm a real estate investor too. You give me some pointers, I'll maybe learn how to make some money on real estate from you guys. And the other thing I want to talk to you about, I heard about Walmart, that the Hickory Lake site might be a potential site for Walmart, and I wanted to, I was kind of surprised because I heard that the mayor and the council in the past were objecting to that, and I've been hearing that this time around, it might not be as objectional to, to that idea. And I read somewhere that this 24/7 Walmarts costing about a million dollars a year in emergency services to the cities. And if that Walmart is going to come in for five years, because that's what the tax breaks are going to be, and then leave in five years, this is going to leave an empty building that might not be very easy to divide, if you're even going to be allowed to do that. And very often, these large businesses, they don't stay after the tax breaks are over. They're gone, and it's cheaper sometimes to move to a new facility. So I was kind of surprised to hear that. And also, I've been hearing about various contracts and things and all this development that's going on in the city, and as far as transparency and openness, I don't know if any of the, anybody on the council involved or works for any of the companies that are getting the contracts from the city, but if anybody is, I would encourage you all to at least tell each other about your possible employment with certain big companies that are getting city contracts. I think that will definitely help with transparency and will definitely build trust from the citizens of the city to this council. And with this, I'm going to let you go and watch the baseball game. See you later.
Larissa Edwards, imminent danger. She's at 304 Hickory Springs Drive.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, city council members, distinguished guests and friends of Smyrna. Please allow me to tell you a little bit about myself. My name is Larissa Edwards, and you know, I know you're saying, you know, well, who are you? It's a good question. I know I don't have a lot of time, so I will be brief. Everyone in here, I need you to hold your seats. I need you to just grab your legs like this and hold your seats because what I have to say will shock some and probably send a few to Emery up the street. I'm a single parent. I'm a Smyrna resident. As a matter of fact, I live right up the block, and I am the Messiah. Oh, what's she talking about? Oh, my God, she said Messiah. Indeed, I am. Typically, I'm actually God's receptionist. I receive messages from God every day. It's a full-time job. I do it all day long. I receive his messages, and I call them memos because that's a little bit more hip, but they are messages, and they are very real. And what I do is I take his messages and I break them down to the simplest form where people can understand them, because God's messages come in in what's called number language. And so why am I here? I'm here to deliver a message, okay? This job I do, I do it for free. I've been doing it for almost two years. This job I do, I do it for free, I've been doing it for almost two years, it's a full-time thing, and I'm honored to do it, because, I mean, if you talk to God every day, you'd be honored as well, and you would do it for free also. And what He wants you to know is that everyone here, everyone, can have everlasting life, okay? It won't cost you a cent, everlasting life is free, free of charge. But that's not the point. In a few minutes, I'm going to prove to you who I am, because only God can do it. But first off, I'd like to give credit where credit is due, okay? God led me to Smyrna, I've lived in other counties, and I didn't feel safe in other counties. And I feel safe in Smyrna, and I feel it's because of Smyrna leadership, and how I can tell Smyrna is led by a fair council is by the police. For an African-American woman, you know, black people, we kind of tend to look at police activity, and Smyrna police are actually very nice, and they seem to be very fair to me, and I know that comes from you guys, okay, that's number one. Okay, I don't know if anyone in here is aware of the DEFCON system, of our nation's DEFCON system, yes?
We have a three-minute.
Have I been talking for three minutes already?
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome back for our next meeting.
I will be back.
Anytime, thank you very much.
When is the next meeting?
The fifteenth, Tax Day.
I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Bobber, Bobber, forty-eight ninety-three Delphi Court, incentive for development and Nikajack parking.
Hi, how are you doing? Because of the mention of Walmart, just want to say, please know Walmarts in Smyrna. Anyway, my main point is additional incentives. At the last meeting, people were talking about some incentives to get some of these fallow properties developed, I think that's a great start, but I think there's some additional incentives that should be put in place, to get more of the city developed in ways that the community wants to see it developed. I have some examples, mixed use over a certain size density, required rezoning to mixed use would be one, another would be anything in the state-defined opportunity zone, any high-density development put in that area, including, excluding apartments, and they have to bring a certain number of jobs. Another example would be office structures of a certain density that bring professional jobs in areas that would be appropriate for that. A good example would be where South Cod meets Concord Road or near two eighty-five, another would be any form of high-density development excluding apartments that can replace blighted strip malls. So, in all those examples, I think that we should have some kind of incentives, whatever would be appropriate to draw that type of development. I think we should also do some work to attract creative businesses, and, you know, creative people, especially to the northwest side of the city, where there's a lot of blight, and I know from seeing other areas that attracting creative people can actually, they know how to fix, you know, make things look pretty, so, designers, artists, musicians, things like that, if we could come up with any way to attract those kind of residents and businesses to the northwest part of the city. I also think there should be an advertising campaign to attract businesses both locally and nationally. So that's basically the topic I have about incentives and attracting business. The other thing I wanted to bring up is Nikajack School, there's been a lot of expansion, and there hasn't been a thought about parking, a lot of the parents that go to Nikajack School, I mean, and I go, my kids go to Nikajack, so I can only talk about Nikajack, but I've heard there's other schools in the city that have similar problems. Nikajack, parents have a lot of trouble parking there, they have to park up and down Mavell Road, they try to park over by the Silver Comet Trail, they try to park across the street, they could, still can't find enough parking. I think there could be a solution to that, there's a little land on the, on Mavell Road that perpendicular parking could be put in, if it's attractive and doesn't detract from the houses behind there. So, but, you know, if the city can just look into how Nikajack parking be fixed, or work with the county, if that's the county's responsibility.
I normally don't respond to citizens' input, however, I'm going to make a couple of comments as it relates to the building on Concord Road. That property is under contract to be sold to an individual or a company, hopefully we'll close on it within the next thirty days, so it'll be put back on the tax rolls. Walmart, we have had several offers on that property, anywhere from single-family housing to other big boxes, and we have not made a determination on what we're going to accept there. The number's about a million dollars a year, if there was a big box Walmart there for public safety, I think that's, I don't know where that came from, we might have been spending a million dollars a year when it was Hickory Lake Apartments, but we aren't, there's no way we'd spend a million dollars a year if a Walmart, or a Target, or a Saks Fifth Avenue, or anything such as that would go in there, it's not going to happen. The issue about Nikajack Elementary, sorry, that's a Cobb County school issue, it's not a City of Smyrna issue as it relates to parking, I think at one time, we tried to get Nikajack to annex into the city, and school board did not want to do it, so you need to go up to Glover Street and address them about the issue of parking, if there's a need of parking, I'm sure they'll give you time at the Cobb County School Board meeting and our representative up there. The other issues that you bring up about incentives, if you'll take the time to get with Ken Sudworth, who's had a rough day and a rough year, we have just about every single economic incentive for businesses come this down, we have enterprise zones, we have all kinds of incentives to offer people to come into the city, so if you take the time to go sit down with Ken, or, you know, you can probably pull it up on our website somewhere, so I appreciate your comments there. But the issue about the incentives, we're way ahead of you, as a matter of fact, we usually tell new development, and we try not to discriminate, whether it be multifamily, or whether it be mixed use, or whether it be commercial. My personal motto is, I can't tell you no unless you ask me, and that is my position as mayor. Of course, I tell a lot of people no to a lot of things that they ask me, but I think we've worked hard to try to encourage development and growth, we have a economic development coordinator, and they are reaching out to folks every single day. Great ideas, and I appreciate your comments, both of, all three of y'all. So, I think you'll find at Wednesday night's meeting, some of the information that was brought up about splash is totally incorrect, and hopefully Wednesday night, you'll find out what the, what the real numbers are, it's not two point eight million dollars to be spent on Atlanta Road, and if a business is out there that wants to get, do business with the city, you need to come talk to us, don't send your representative. I doubt very seriously if that was a representative that came here. If you're a Smyrna business, we try to, we try to do business, we give the folks in Smyrna an opportunity first. If this guy's been in business for eleven years without getting any business from us, I've never, I've never talked to the guy, I'm open twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, Nine thirty, last time I heard, the Braves were ahead five to three, anybody know any different? Five to one? Six to three? Great, I declare this meeting adjourned at nine thirty-two.
School board representative.
Thank you.
Random thing, I just keep telling you.
Do you think that, I mean, is that something that they could...
It's only...
Is that actually, is that...